On my way out, it's like, do I want to go back for it?
Whatever you got.
No.
But then I...
It was nothing.
Okay.
Terrible.
So I figured. So I tried.
Now I don't have my real time check. I know that clock is fast.
We have one minute.
One minute.
It looks like it's bad.
And...
That's good.
And I saw, oh no, she was picking up burritos.
Did you guys order burritos?
No.
The most...
Correct.
She's going to sit here and eat it and watch it.
She's dropping off at home.
From where?
I don't know. I saw her, don't see, and I thought she was heading next door. They were around.
Right there. It's six o'clock left.
Okay. Just get it together.
You're here.
Yes.
Oh, did I do something wrong?
No.
Not yet.
I just looked forward if you were coming up. So I'm going to...
Oh, no, no. It's better for sure. Everybody can change our minds.
I'm good. How about you?
Hello. I'm going to call the regular meeting of the San Helena Planning Commission to order Tuesday, April 16th. And Joel, would you please lead us in the pledge?
Lester, I think you technically have to do it as the chairperson.
It's on you, bro.
Guys, we're going to remember all the words. I'm great to discover the start.
It's a long agenda. You don't keep us all night.
The free country. You don't have to do it.
Come on, Lester.
To the public legends. To the United States of America. And to the Republic where it stands, one nation, under your God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I think I've ever had to leave that.
It is the custom of this body to invite our guests to lead us in the pledge. Did you go to a Waldorf school? What's going on here?
No.
Yeah. That makes two of us.
Roll call.
Roll call, please.
Commissioner Hale.
Here.
Vice Chair Pont.
Here.
Commissioner Monette.
Here.
Chair Hardy.
Here.
And Commissioner Anderson.
Here.
Moving on to the public forum. This is an opportunity for members of the public to speak to the commission on matters that are not on the agenda. And because they're not on the agenda, then we can't say anything back. So I suppose for some things, that's perfect. In any event, is there anyone who would like to speak to us at the public forum? Seeing none, we'll move on to consent items. We have two consent items on tonight's agenda. 4.1, which is approval of minutes, and 4.2, which is a request by Joel Gott on behalf of Napa Valley Petroleum for sign approval. Members of the public can request any item on the consent agenda be pulled from that agenda for further discussion, as can any member of the commission. I'll start with the commission. Is there anyone who would like to pull?
I would like to request that 4.2 be pulled.
Very good. So we will pull item 4.2 for discussion. That leaves us with approval of minutes from April 2nd, 2019, still on the consent agenda. I would entertain a motion.
Move to approve.
Second.
Ms. Camaro.
Commissioner Monette.
Yes.
Vice Chair Pont.
Yes.
Commissioner Hale.
Yes.
Commissioner Autumn. Anderson, sorry.
Yes.
And Chair Hardy.
Yes. Moving on then to item 4.2, which is the request by Joel Gott on behalf of Napa Valley Petroleum for approval of resolution granting a sign permit for new signage at 1153 Main Street. Do we have a staff report?
I welcome any questions the commission may have regarding this application, and I believe Joel Gott is here, the applicant, to answer any questions as well.
Thank you, Ms. Camaro. Is this your first staff report?
No.
No. I didn't think so. Okay. So easily confused.
Well done.
Are there any questions from the commission?
I do have a couple. Microphone.
I do have a couple. And let me start off by saying that this looks like, in general, to be a good use of the location. You're taking something that was otherwise unused and changing it into something that we'll see, but at least from initial looks, looks attractive. However, I do have a couple concerns about this project, or at least this piece of the This is the first one under the modified sign ordinance, right? And I'd just like to say, in general, every time we modify an ordinance and something comes to us for the first time, I'd rather not see it on consent, just because it is the first time under a new ordinance, and we need to figure out how it works, particularly when the ordinance calls for commission action that is different than we've ever seen before. And this one does indeed call for something that's different than has ever been seen before. I'd just like to ask a first question of staff. Are there any standards at all in the ordinance as drafted for size and number of signs that can be approved by the planning commission, as long as those signs do not tumble into the ones that we cannot approve or nobody can approve?
So I don't believe there are. The, and I'll have Senior Planner Heacock correct me if I'm wrong. So the council and commission in recommending modifications to the sign code essentially directed staff to review a majority of the signs, providing specific criteria for how those signs are going to be reviewed and acted on at administrative level, at the staff level. And then any sign that does not meet those must go before the planning commission for review and action.
So basically, we have no standard Celine back on about how big signs can be, or how many of them there can be on a property.
Other than the existing signs at the administrative level.
I'd call that problematical for a couple of reasons. The one, I've never met a business owner that doesn't think bigger and more, is an ideal solution for them to drag in more business. What we've had in the past is a limitation on how many and how large. But with this change in the ordinance, we have no such limitation. I'd rather not see this turn into the kind of thing where I got something bigger, well, I'm going to go to the planning commission and get something bigger yet. I'm going to, I'm going to, and pretty soon we look like downtown Las Vegas. So given that, I'm really anxious to make sure that the first time we do this, we look at what's going on and do it properly. So by what I see, and if staff can correct me, we've got two, a 20-foot square sign on each side, a 20-foot square sign on the front, and two auxiliary signs also on the front. That one's about a little over four square feet, the other two are very tiny, a little bit over four square feet. Is that correct?
If I can clarify, just to make sure I understood you correctly, there's three signs that will read "Station." There is one on the front facade that will read "St. Helena, California," and two on the, two pin-mounted signs that will say "Coffee, Food, and Drinks."
Right. There's three signs that say "Station." They're 20 square foot apiece, right?
Correct.
And this approximately, I presume, will be exactly 180 inches, won't be 190 inches or 200 inches. Is it 180 inches period?
100, yes. If we look at the...
Okay. Because it says approximately. And, you know, where I come from, approximately means kind of like anything you wanted to mean. So the top one is 20 square feet.
Correct.
The bottom one is a little over four square feet. And there's three of the top one, one on the bottom one, and then two on the awning that's about four square feet.
Correct.
Okay. That was it for questions, I think, from me.
Any other questions for staff?
No.
Then I'd like to invite the applicant to speak to the commission, if he wishes. He didn't like the pledge too much.
No, I'm just nervous that I've messed it up.
You gave him his first word.
Yeah, well, at least I got passed out without messing that up. Any questions about them? I mean, I was, the reason I did the architecture of the signs this way was what I thought was most in-keeping in the same color paint as the tram, and not to make it Vegas-like, right? Because I'm against that as well. So I tried to keep it clean, simple. I thought it was really important to bring the word "St. Helena" into it, because in today's world, I think that everybody's taking a selfie when they visit a town, when they're, you know, walking up and down as a tourist around St. Helena. And for that group of people, I think it's good to have where we are in big letters. I'd like to see more of that in town, actually. I think it kind of balances it. There's not much more on the signage on it. There was, at one point, we talked about doing pin on the sombrero, the piece that covers the pumps. We talked about doing pin letters above it that would be like six or eight inches tall, stainless steel that said "St. Helena." We thought it'd be a good, you know, visual for people to take a photo of or something, but we took those off because that exceeded the square footage by quite a bit. We'd go look at it if you guys liked that idea. I mean, I was just trying to make it something that looked appropriate for town. It doesn't really advertise much, more to me, it just felt appropriate to have the big word "Stations" on the side, or "Station."
Any questions for Mr. Gott? Okay. Thank you, Joel.
Hopefully, it won't be two years later than I originally planned.
I'll open the public hearing for members of the public to comment. Is there anyone who would like to speak to this item? Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing and return to the commission for discussion. I think perhaps you should start, John.
I'd be happy to. Like I said, this is the first one. As it stands, if this was under the previous ordinance, in other words, if you'd filed a month earlier, the ones on the side are by half too big. And the "St. Helena" on the front, because you have two other auxiliary signs on the front, one of them would have to go, two auxiliary signs. Like I said, I don't want to start a race. As it is now, particularly the side signs, you're twice the size that we used to allow. I don't want to get in the position where everybody else from town runs in and says, you know, "The new station has signs that are twice the size of mine." I want signs that size. Or worse yet, I want signs that are bigger. I'd like to suggest that the side signs come down to the standards under the old statute, that they be 10 square feet apiece rather than 20. That's my first pitch. I would let the extra auxiliary sign in the front go. After all, we have a new set of standards, which is pretty much, anything the commission will approve is okay. So as it stands now, if you'd come forward and said, you know, "I want a wrap on the whole facade that says 'Station' in 10-foot-high letters," we'd be forced to consider it. I don't want to go the route where we start that Red Queen's race, where nobody can catch up to it. So I think if we get something close to what we've had in the past, nobody's going to be too anxious about it. But if we come out of the box doubling something...
We did.
I'd rather not go there.
I know. Thank you.
Commissioner Hale.
I'd just like to kind of weigh in that I think, you know, one, our charge is to kind of dance with the girl that brung us, in terms of the rules that apply or the rules that apply now, not the ones that applied previously. So I don't have any issue with what used to be. It's not really my, I don't look at that as my purview to weigh in on that. I probably would have argued that the sign is remarkably sort of in keeping with the building. I think, I would have argued that the letters and the space between them, I would have argued that the square footage of the sign is the S, the T, the A, the T, the I, the O, the N, and the wall, the white wall space around it is no different than the wall of the building. You know, I think it's sensitive to the design of the building. I look forward to a kind of energetic, kind of re-energizing of that space. I think it's terrific.
I think that's part of the point, if I can respond a bit, Commissioner Hale. There are no standards. We set them. Period.
I understand that, and I think each one that comes before us, our job is to do our job. You know, I think that it's pretty clear that each, you know, I don't, I don't see the issue. You know, I think they've decided which ones they're going to deliver to us to deliberate, and we are charged to do that. And I've already kind of made my peace on this one.
Commissioner Monette.
Yeah, I'm kind of in agreement with Commissioner Hale, in this sense. I think it's arbitrary, and I appreciate maybe it's arbitrary to say we should go by the past ones. When I first saw, when I was first reading it, and it said "Six Signs," I went, "Six Signs?" I thought, "They're only supposed to be three or something." But then I looked at them. I think they're really tastefully done. I mean, they were, it's just, I think it's elegant. And I, you know, I don't notice, I don't, and with respect to, you know, whether other people are going to try to out-sign you, I mean, that's sort of like the future. So maybe we should leave the past in the future. I mean, we do think about cumulative effects, but I think that in terms of a precedent, this is a precedent for something that's in keeping with our ordinance, and I think really tastefully done. I think if we're going to have a precedence in this direction, this is one that I think is fine. So I have no problem with it. I, for once, didn't see anything. I want to thank you for being tasteful, to my mind, and also just staying within, you know, within the boundaries of the current ordinances. So I don't have a problem with it.
Commissioner Anderson.
I think that the sign is, it goes with the design and the scale of the space. And I also feel like it is in kind of the whole Joel Gott theme of brands. I think it fits in with your image, and I think that fits in with St. Helena's. So I don't have any issue with this design.
I like the design fine. I think it actually, as has already been said, fits the building marvelously well. At the same time, I think Commissioner Pont's concerns are well taken. Without any guidance from the new ordinance itself, I think it's really essential that we make thoughtful findings if we're going to approve this signage, so that, so that there is a basis for either distinguishing this approval from other projects or finding them analogous, as a lawyer would say. And one of the challenges then, in the absence of any guidance from the ordinance, is we really have to provide staff with something to work from in drafting findings that reflects our discussion. So to get right down to it, just saying we like it doesn't do much. References to the compatibility of the design with the architecture of the building are useful. The other thing that seems to me distinctive about this project is that unlike most buildings in our central business district, this building stands alone. It's exposed to view actually on all four sides, and most conspicuously on three. We have a number of locations where, on a corner building, you'd have two sides. We have a lot of businesses on Main Street where they present street frontage only. At the edges of the central business district, some of the relatively modern bank structures come immediately to mind. We do have some other standalone structures, but not that many. So one of the reasons I'm as comfortable with this design as I am is because the signage fits, I think, in good proportion to each side elevation of the structure. It doesn't seem to overwhelm the structure as a whole. I didn't really come to this meeting thinking I was going to need to draft findings, so that's about as far as I'm going to get for the moment. But Director House, do you have anything to add?
Staff has been listening to the discussion of the commission and feels we can make project-specific findings to both identify the unique character that the commission has discussed and their support for the design, while also trying to identify that it is a, each project must stand on its own and will be reviewed as such.
And I want to go on to say, thank you. That's very helpful, that just because it is possible to work at project-specific findings each and every time we have a sign for review by the planning commission, doesn't mean I think that's a great use of our time. I'm entirely persuaded by Mr. Pont that the ordinance needs further amendments to provide the commission with some guidance. To have it written so that any sign is approvable if we like it, and on the flip side, deniable if we don't, that seems to me just too broad a grant of discretion. So I don't know, well, I do know, actually. I think we would need direction from the council to initiate an amendment.
And I will remind the commission that the city council has identified a complete zoning code rewrite as a priority for the staff and the commission, and we will be moving forward with that. However, if the commission finds it appropriate to maybe accelerate certain elements of the zoning code rewrite, we can work to do that.
Well, it has occurred to me actually earlier today that for that rather ambitious project to be manageable, we're going to have to break it up into manageable pieces. I don't know, I mean, I don't think we'd want to see the sign ordinance all by itself, but not in the context of a comprehensive zoning ordinance update. But at the same time, I, when I contemplate what it would be like to try to review a good overhaul of the entire ordinance on one agenda, I need another week off, is what I'm thinking. So it's a much longer vacation than I have scheduled. So, yeah, I think I would recommend strongly that as you work with the council and the consultants on that contract and moving the whole process forward, looking to presenting it to commission in manageable chunks would probably be a great idea.
Staff will also look for opportunities to accelerate certain elements of the code that are more applicable or maybe more problematic as those present themselves.
So then, this is my last question for you, Director House. With findings to be drafted, should we simply be continuing this until you can come back with findings, or how do you want to proceed?
Staff is hearing four commissioners supporting the project, finding it consistent with the requirements of zoning code section 17.148 relating to the size and placement of the signs in the central business district, in that the building is a standalone building presenting more facade options and signage opportunities. The proposed sign designs are in scale and proportion with each of those elevations and consistent with the overall design theme, and this action is judged on the individual merits of this application, and it shall not be construed as setting precedents in
Commissioner Monette.
I don't see why we need to continue it with that, with those, with what Noah just read as part of, you know, the motion to go forward.
Commissioner Hale.
I see no reason to continue it.
Commissioner Anderson.
I don't see any reason to continue.
Everyone satisfied with the findings? Well...
Almost.
Four out of five. With that, then I would entertain a motion, unless there's further discussion.
Well, I make a motion that we support staff recommendations. Do we need to include any of the things that Noah said? As amended. Okay. Thank you.
Second.
Well, I'm going to slow this down if I may. I would suggest that you amend the motion to clarify that we're determining that the signs are exempt from the requirements of SEQA pursuant to section 15311, and make the motion on the resolution. You can do it in one motion, but we should reference both.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Ms. Camaro, please.
Commissioner Monette.
Yes.
Commissioner Hale.
Yes.
Commissioner Anderson.
Yes.
Vice Chair Pont.
No.
Chair Hardy.
That brings us to our public hearings. We have two, and the first is a request by Luca Piñata on behalf of Patrick and Laura Polan for adoption of a resolution approving a use permit and design review to accommodate the construction of a new single-family home, accessory dwelling unit...
the construction of a new single-family home, accessory dwelling unit, barn, and accessory structures on the property located at 601 Fulton Lane. Is this yours?
It is. Thank you, Chair Hardy. So, as detailed in the staff report, in 2016, a tentative parcel map was approved creating the subject parcel and the half-acre parcel at what is now 603 Fulton Lane. At the same time, design review was approved for this parcel with a 7,624-square-foot single-story, single-family residence with a detached accessory dwelling unit and a four-car garage. These structures, however, were never constructed, and the property was eventually sold to the current owner. A new design review application is now before the commission and is required as the previous approval has long since expired, and the newly proposed design is substantially different to what was previously approved. Currently, the applicant is proposing to construct an approximately 8,100-square-foot single-story, single-family residence with a 795-square-foot attached garage, 1,410-square-foot agricultural barn, a 1,200-square-foot accessory dwelling unit, and a 420-square-foot accessory building. It also includes an attached two-car covered carport. The new home and associated structures share the same architectural style and would be finished with a variety of materials included, including painted vertical wood siding, corrugated metal roofing, and black painted metal doors and windows. The height of the proposed home at the roof ridge would be approximately 23 feet. Well, the barn would be approximately 22 feet to the top of the ridge. The proposed home and all other structures meet height setback and parking requirements and have a non-agricultural coverage under one acre, according to the applicant's provided graphic. As the property is currently undeveloped, the project would typically need to provide off-site water retrofits in order to offset projected future water use. However, as part of past approvals for both 601 and 603 Fulton, off-site retrofits have already been completed to the satisfaction of the Public Works Director. While the proposed home is quite large, it is only one story in height, is proposed near the center of a very large parcel, and is located in a more rural area of town where larger homes and larger-than-average parcels are not uncommon. There are no properties near the project site that would be negatively affected by the development of the project at this location. For these reasons, staff is recommending that the planning commission determine that project is exempt from the requirements of SEQA pursuant to section 15303, and accept the required findings and approve a resolution granting use permit and design review approval for the proposed new construction on the property located at 601 Fulton Lane. The applicant and the representatives are here, should they like to speak. Staff would like to note that there was substantial back-and-forth with the applicant and their representatives to modify certain aspects of this submiddle. The barn, for instance, was in a completely different location, actually further down, closer to the river. We had them pull that back. They had proposed an alternative driveway design at one point in time. They agreed to move it back to how it was and was originally proposed to satisfy some concerns of the neighbors. With that, there were no additional negative public comments as the application as it stands now, and I'm happy to answer any questions you may have. And again, the applicant and the representatives are here.
Commissioner Monet?
Yeah, I have a question. I mean, I am really old, and I'm not totally knowledgeable about robots, but I've never heard of a mechanical room. So, I'm wondering what a mechanical room is.
They, I believe it states in here, it's mechanical equipment, essentially, so they have storage, maybe pool equipment, things like that.
Oh, okay, so it's a storage room?
Yeah, heating and cooling. It's mainly, it's mainly storage and something to enclose.
So, is there something, though, in the profession that mechanical, I mean, in the law, that's, that, tell me about mechanical?
HVAC would be mechanical, like heating, venting, air conditioning would be considered mechanical equipment.
Okay, so what would, okay, you were going to say something?
I was going to say, it's an industry term.
It's an industry term, so what's going to be in these mechanical rooms, or do you know?
I don't know off the top of my head. I believe I referenced it somewhere in the staff report, but the applicant's representatives can answer that question.
Okay, all right.
It's less than common to see it in a single-family home because equipment is often just externally mounted, so outside. Commercial buildings often have a mechanical room, just for some context.
And I just, okay, so I just wondered if it's air conditioning or whatever, so it's, you know, the sound can travel even though it's, you know, so that's always my concern, so I'm...
So, in this situation, it will be enclosed, inside.
Okay, and, all right, thank you. And also, what are folding glass doors? I've never heard of that. What is that?
Larger doors that can fold in and out.
They're glass? Okay, I'm just ignorant on that. Thank you. Amazing.
Commissioner Hale?
I have no questions.
Commissioner Anderson?
I am struggling to find where it was written, but you said that it didn't conflict with any other proposed projects, and I just wanted to make sure that the applicant was aware of the Hunter project that is proposed for the parcel behind them.
You'd have to ask the applicant. I don't know if they're, or where I would assume that they are.
Okay. Just wanted to make sure.
Commissioner Pont?
Yeah, I do have some questions. Technically, isn't this a four-bedroom house to start with? The office has a closet.
If the office has a closet, that would, by code, count as a bedroom.
Okay, so it's a four-bedroom house, not a three-bedroom house. But that wouldn't make any difference to the water analysis because that include, yeah. And that the one-acre limitation is under 1720050C1, right?
I'm sorry, what was the question?
172005060, ha, C1. It says, "Non-agricultural coverage. No more than one acre of any parcel shall be removed from active agricultural use." Active agricultural use means animal husbandry, crop, tree farming, and all viticulture. All structures, driveways, except for a 16-foot wide driveway, no greater than two-thirds the length of the parcel. Parking, patios, lawn, or other non-agricultural uses shall be limited to one acre maximum per parcel." So, that's where the limitation comes in.
Oh, okay. Were you questioning it? I just didn't hear. I just couldn't hear.
Oh, okay. Were any of the accessways here shown on A104, were any of those called for by fire protection at all?
What do you mean by accessways?
Well, you've got, you've got one that runs in front of the structure, and you've got one that loops behind the structure. They're sort of a gray.
I don't recall if those are required by fire. I'm trying...
I was interested in that because...
Yeah, they met extensively with the fire marshal, so I'm sure the applicant's representative could answer that.
Because A103 shows fire hose lengths. Yeah, and also radiative curvature, they're sufficient for large...
Yep, yep.
I know, radiative curvature, they're sufficient for large firefighting vehicles.
Yep, so I, based on what you pointed out on A103, I would, I would assume that both the one on the rear and the front were both required by the fire department.
Okay, those are, those are required by fire for the structure, correct?
Correct.
Okay. This may be somewhat of an inclusion, but it seems kind of hard to say that if fire requires something for the structure, that they're agricultural. Let's, let's go on to the next question. If I can get you to turn back to A104, please. The restriction calls for you to be able to write off a 16-foot wide driveway, two-thirds the length of the parcel. Oh, I scaled it off, maybe somebody could scale it off a bit better. I hate plans that don't have numbers on them. This looks like it's two-thirds of the length of the parcel, but it is wider than 16 feet. You've got the 30, 40-foot turnaround, partway down, that's wider than 16 feet.
Turnout, you mean? The turnout, you mean?
Yeah, yeah. And you've also got a large radius of curvature as you approach the dark green area. That's also wider than 16 feet. It seems to me those should not be included in the write-off, and those are definitely part of the non-agricultural coverage, I would think, because they're part of the driveway, they're just wider than the amount you can write off. Also, if I could get you to look again at A104, the most, I suppose that would be southerly, green area in front of the house. If you notice, that has the non-agricultural portion running through what looks like the balls of two trees, and leaving half the tree coverage in the agricultural area. I'm kind of curious as to why the line was driven there and not encompassing the whole tree, pair of trees, especially if you look at A110, that shows a little seating space between those two trees. So, I'm thinking this is landscaping, not viticultural. How much of that space is landscaping and not viticultural, I'm not sure. See the little seating space there that extends into what the line is there for the viticultural area? I would say a speeding space is not viticultural, but I don't know how far the landscaping extends there, so I can't...
Is it at the top or the bottom? Where is it?
Right. Let's see, you can see the, see right there with the two trees close to each other? And see the seating for four?
On the bottom of the picture? On the top of the picture?
No, no. Right here. Right here. See the seating?
Oh, 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 got you.
And if you look on the, on the, one that's supposed to show you excluded versus excluded, the excluded line runs right down through part of the table and through the balls of the two trees.
Got you, got you. Okay, thank you.
Seems to me not to be agriculturally related, again. So, I'm...
I would defer questions about how the calculations were made to the applicant and their representatives.
Okay.
I mean, that could be for, you know, laborer lunch spot, you know? I just, I don't know.
Are the tolerances...
Right outside your office with the big pullback wall, glass wall?
I'm just wondering if the tolerances for that metric of not, you know, covering more than an acre, are they that...
It may be, but they're...
Are they that small on this project, that these would, that this would make a difference?
I believe the applicant has some information to, will shed some light on how the calculations were done with regarding to active agriculture.
Their calculations go down to the square foot.
But I was just wondering how, are the, are the, you know, are the tolerances really, I mean, is this close to going over, what they have here?
They're very close to going over.
Oh, okay, all right. So, it's...
Those were, so you can see, I'm curious if we're really under the one acre, particularly including the roadways that, going by your answer, appear to be more for the structure than for viticulture. I think I'm done at this point.
Any other questions for staff? I have at least one. Looking at the definition of active agricultural use that's quoted from the code and in the staff report, well, the first part of it, actually, it says, "This means that not more than one acre of the parcel shall be removed from active agricultural use." So, what I'm wondering is, if this parcel had no active agricultural use, would the one-acre limit apply at all?
It's a good question, and I think it's debatable, but however, I think the intent of the section is that regardless of how much is actually planted in active agriculture, you're only supposed to have a development envelope of no more than one acre for anything that's not agriculture.
I agree with that as a statement of intent, but if that's the intent, the execution leaves something to be desired. Comes back to what's now kind of a worn-out theme here with me about the rather enormous task we have in cleaning up the ordinance, but yet again, I can't, I can't reconcile the idea of intent that you've articulated and which I would have expressed along the same lines that have been asked with the language that's in the code. So, another note, I'll also note, because I looked at this earlier, to my dismay, I saw that while we have this limitation in A20, we have none in the ag preserve. I can't make any sense out of that whatsoever.
You mean, there's no limit on how much you can cover in the ag preserve?
Not that I could find.
Oh, yeah.
So, that's it for questions of staff. This would be the time for the applicant or the applicant's representative to present.
Hello, I'm Patrick Polan, this is my wife, Laura.
Hi.
This is going to be our primary residence. We have actually sold our house down in the peninsula, and this is where we're going to live. The, I'll let the experts who we hired talk about things like square footage, but for us, we're from Iowa, and we've lived in California for 25 years, and we want to get back to farming. And so, many of the features you see, like the planter boxes there, that those are going to be fruits and vegetables to bring into the kitchen. Many of the trees, the two trees outside the office, were intending to be fruit trees. And since we bought the property, we've added about one acre of vineyards, and there's another four acres that sit down, I don't know what direction it is, toward Silverado Trail, that I'm going to farm. I'm going to plant fruits and vegetables and flowers. And so, that's, that's our vision for the property. And we worked, as Aaron and Noah mentioned, we met with them, and they've been terrifically helpful. We met them before we bought the property. We met with them immediately after we bought the property, and I think we've met with them one other time, and they've been terrific help to us. To answer one question that I know I can answer is, the roads around the perimeter were required by the fire department to, to put, to put access fire trucks to put out fires, whether they're the structure or outside the structure. So, with that, I'll tell you that Luca Pignata is our architect. We picked Luca because the Italians have such a way with food integrated into family. And Greg is working with us, and our potential contractor, Bob Bliss, and Claudia Schmidt is our landscaper. So, with that, I don't know if you have any questions for us, but that's all we really wanted to say.
Who is the contractor?
Bob Bliss.
Bliss, okay, thank you.
But we're, we're looking forward to making a St. Helena home. A little story is Laura's mom, who died of MS. Her name was Helen, and so we've always had an affinity for St. Helena. And when we got to this particular property, it was ringed by walnut trees, many of which are dead, but Laura's mom... But Laura's mom, we've been dating since we were sophomores in high school. Laura's mom loved walnuts.
She went walnut picking all the time, so it just felt right.
It felt right to us. So that, that's all we have to say, unless you have questions.
Thank you. Are there any questions for the applicant?
I do have, I think just one. On A201, you show what looks like some kind of utility building at the edge of your developed compound?
We like to think of it as a house, but I think that's where we're going to keep things like, things that, to do farming.
Yes.
So like wheelbarrows, those kind of things.
Yeah, barn and treehouse.
So, so that as I get older, I don't have to go all the way to the barn. I can just go...
I can wheel him. He's wheeling there.
I'm just kind of looking at it. I don't see any pathway to or from the large roll-up door.
Um...
Which is on the end.
Yeah, I, again, I, I'll let that to Luca, but...
I mean, your, your, your drawing shows that all planted in what I assume to be rows of vineyard.
Yeah.
Right, right outside the door, so, you know, I'm kind of curious how you get to or from it.
Hopefully, there's a little way in.
A little path?
I...
Yeah, I'm sure there's a path.
None appears on the, on the drawing, so.
Okay.
That drives the question.
Okay.
A tunnel.
Yeah.
Yeah.
From the wine cellar.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, commissioners and staff. Greg Desmond, planning consultant, 333 Newton Way, Angwin. And yes, the non-agricultural coverage provision in the A20 zoning district is rather difficult to comprehend. We did work quite a bit with staff to come up with the exhibits that you see in front of you, and we are about 1,000 square feet below the threshold of one acre. And that's not taking into account the fact that the parcel, when it was purchased... Actually, Ziny, could you bring it to the second sheet that's basically the survey?
Page number two?
We sort of focused on the first sentence of that provision, which says, "Shall not be removed from active agricultural use." And as you can see from the survey, first of all, the parcel historically has not been planted to vineyard, although I think historically it did have some head-trained vineyards and some fruit trees on it from way back in the day, but the previous owner who owned this parcel planted a portion of this to vineyard. And the Bowlins have subsequently planted an additional acre of vineyard on this parcel. You'll notice roughly where the house is to be located, there's approximately an acre portion that is currently not planted, and it's evidenced here in the survey as well as some of the site photos. They're included in the packet. So when we look at how we came up with the calculations or the calculus for the non-agricultural coverage, we didn't back that portion out of anything that we presented to you. But, I mean, the intent and the overall result of this project is, will be a net increase in agriculture, active agriculture on this parcel. Not only in vineyard, but also cut flowers, fruit trees, and so forth. We're talking about a parcel that's roughly 14 acres in size. So, anyway, I'm here to answer any questions you have about how we came up with some of the calculus, but that's sort of what we ended up with. But when you look at the strict interpretation of that code section, it says removal of active agriculture.
Would you say then that if you covered 10 acres of this, it wouldn't be removed from active agricultural because there's nothing, there's no active agricultural on it at the present?
That's not what we're proposing.
That was the question, Greg.
What, what we're proposing...
I mean, the, the, part of the point is that this requirement is in there to try and keep as much of prime and prime-like agriculture land in the city uncovered as possible. That's the whole point of it. So every time we cover something, even though it doesn't have a vine planted there right now, means that it's out of agricultural production forever. You'll never have a vine planted on it, ever. So that's why I think the acre is important, and active agricultural use, that doesn't necessarily mean today. Because once it's gone, it's gone, and it'll never be recovered. I have relatives that used to own parts of what is now San Jose, and it's gone. It was active agricultural use. And it's not recoverable, so once we cover it, it's gone. Also, I, I think it's important to consider that this is the last one that'll probably come through before there'll have to be mitigations for even the acre. And just at this point, this was applied for ahead of time. I'd like to look at this as valuable property that we need to retain, not only for us, but our heirs down the line. And once we cover it with concrete, it's gone.
I don't know if you're the person to ask, but I'm wondering if a lot of the, the planting areas within the acre are going to be gardens and fruit trees, is that considered agricultural then? Can that be not deducted, I mean, you know, not added to the amount that's being covered with non-agriculture?
That's what we've tried to do in the current calculations that are in front of you.
But I mean, is that, is that, is that what we're looking at? So it's, it's, does that include the 1,000 square feet that you said it's shy of an acre? Does that include the...
So what we've, what we've done is we've calculated all the building square footage, patio areas, and a percentage of the driveway, and come up with the number that is roughly 1,000 square feet below the threshold of 43, 560 square feet.
But I guess I...
Commissioner, a minute, just, I just want to make a suggestion I think will help you here. If you turn to the full-size sheet, A1.04, you'll see the areas called out, the calculations are there. It's color-coded to some extent.
Oh, thank you. So I have a trouble reading these, but so, so the green areas within, those are thought of as ag, those are not considered covered, part of the acre?
That's correct.
Okay, got you. So given, including those, it's 1,000 square feet under the, okay, got you. Thank you. Sorry, I'm not very good at reading those things.
And again, to clarify Patrick's comments, we did spend some quality time with not only staff, but also with Chief Capone about making sure that the appropriate fire apparatus could get to every point of the project site.
Thank you.
Good afternoon. My name is Luca Pignata. I'm the architect for the project, and thank you for all the hard work. It's been a good process together. And thank you for the comments. They're just spot-on. We are in progress. We're doing our best. This is, this is something we try to develop to a point where we meet all the requirements. We, we wanted to do something that's very respectful. First of all, the, the most important thing as an architect, that this, this house was going to be shaped and, and, and starting from the sides, where the location, the side, the view, the surrounding was as important as the building. This is a one-story building. This is more than 10 feet shorter than it could have been. We are far from the road, which kind of added a little bit of the driveway. We want to be respectful of the neighbor, and we stay, you know, in a location that was kind of respectful for, for the surrounding in that sense, which penalized us in the calculation, in that sense. Through the process, dealing with all the agencies, you know, you get information from all different directions. We try to keep everything in check. Yes, you're right, the fire department had this requirement. We had to place them in. For us, it was a huge challenge to make sure that a fire truck was getting around properly. We were doing this while all this fire were happening, and the priority was to make sure the fire had good access. The fire department was a priority. We are still below. We are still 1,000 square feet below. It's not a lot. We understand that, but we are not above. And, and we did our best to really, truly calculate as good as we could. We put the green and the red and yellow. Some of the area, like the seating area, absolutely correct. We kept about a 10-feet buffer. It's hard to see in this picture, but it is a 10-feet of landscaping area in front of that glass door, actually. It is an area that, it would be planted, but it would be, because it's like at the glass door, we realized that we're not going to put a vineyard there. So we kept a buffer, a separation there. In a similar way, by the way, I'll go back and review that. I think it was a good comment. In front of the accessory building, we left about a four-foot path, and, which is not a lot, but it's just a way to get around, open the door, and then by then you are kind of, you access the site. At that point, with vineyard consultants, with, with the whole team, we understand better the crops and exactly what equipment goes in. So there is some work to be done, but it was done with truly, as, as, all the care we could possibly put on a project which we love. We feel that it's, it's a project that will fit beautifully in the area. People will be glad. There is something of that scale and that property. Someone will build there. This is a building that the community would be proud of, we feel. So, and again, we are, we are where we are. We are building in the, in a location where there is no vineyards, so we are not taking away almost any vineyards for the placement of the building. And we're adding a lot of landscape, a lot of agricultural crops and planting on property. So we think that we should all be very happy about it.
Any questions for Mr. Pignata?
You said it perfectly.
I worked at it.
I'm wondering where you're from in Italy.
Right in the northwest Piemonte region. Wine country too, so one region.
No, better than that.
Yeah.
Barolo wine.
I do have one question. You're showing what I'm assuming is some kind of waste management area on the plants?
Well, septic, septic leach field area.
Septic system, yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
And that's not going to be planted?
Not going to be planted.
So once again, it's not agricultural use?
Well...
But you're showing it as agricultural use?
Yeah. Yeah, we, that's a good point. We can plant over it, and actually, it's an area that we just didn't design yet to do something, but the desire is, is something to plant. We could plant.
It's also worth noting, a portion of that was approved as a part of the previous subdivision. That's a required easement serving the adjacent parcel.
Both, both pieces?
A portion of, of both.
I mean, or all three, I should say, rather.
I know the two vertical rectangle tangles adjacent to the parcel are easement area serving that adjacent parcel.
So that's already areas that have been taken out of agricultural use?
Well, not necessarily. The complication is more practical. If you plant before you put the leach field in, then you may find that you don't have the planting oriented in a way that is compatible with installation of the leach field. It's much easier to plant after the leach field is in. And one does best if one is planting a crop that likes lots of water year-round.
And that leach field has been installed?
But, but certainly it is possible to plant on the leach field. One can often identify the leach field near a winery by the exuberant growth of the grapevines.
Doesn't the roots of the plants get into the leach line holes or anything? Doesn't hurt them?
Cannot explain technically exactly what happened with the roots in the, in the, in the drip lines, but it's very common practice to plant over it. It's not damaging.
Works fine.
Okay, thanks.
Yeah.
Any other questions for Mr. Pignata? Thank you.
Thank you.
This is a public hearing. I will open the public hearing and invite anyone who wishes to speak to come forward.
Good evening, commissioners. Ethan Brown, 489 Fulton Lane. I'm two doors down from the subject property. Nice to meet you. Planning hearing style. First, just a general comment. There are two items for public hearing tonight, and one's for approval of the general plan update, and yet the entire crowd is here for, for Fulton Lane property. Just thought that was kind of odd.
Feel my pain.
Expecting a big, full house tonight for the IR, so it's interesting. Also, if I could ask a question of clarification, the, the agenda talks about this being a review for design review and project approval, but when you go online to the project, Planning Department projects, this doesn't come up. What comes up is a Williamson Act application? Is, is that going to be a follow-up hearing associated with that? Will that be noticed?
No, the Williamson Act will be noticed, but that goes straight to city council.
Okay.
So that, that's down the road. We're still working on that.
Okay.
And this project is also online, but under a different file number.
Okay, I didn't see it flagged in the little icons. So will that, when that comes out, that'll have details associated with that contract and so forth? Okay, thank you. So first of all, I, and my wife Kirsten and daughter Sweden are sitting behind our new neighbors. Kirsten's a local. I'm not a local. I'm a 21-year resident, but I realize that doesn't make me local, just a longtime resident. So had the pleasure of meeting a lot of people over my 21 years here. They had the wherewithal to live anywhere in the world, and I've always been impressed at what brought them here, not just the wine, but really an affinity for agriculture. So I really appreciate your introduction, your story, and, you know, having ag roots and what's bringing you back here to the valley, so glad to hear that. Also, we have a, a book on our nightstand called "From the Land," which is about an inch-and-a-half-thick book of a body of work by Howard Backen's office, and we're very fortunate in the valley to have such a, such a body of work here to be around and observe and see its beautiful work. So I certainly don't have any statements to make arguing against the aesthetics of the project. I'm sure it'll be absolutely a stunning home. So, quite large, 12,000 feet of built, you know, structure, again, within, within the, the, the current zoning code. Not going to argue against that, but it seems like something that, you know, the department might want to look at along with other things in the, when it sounds like you're revisiting a number of things in the planning code. Seems like every time a little house gets torn down in town, it gets rebuilt with something that just absolutely maximizes the entire lot. And again, there's a little bit of apples and oranges with this. It's going to be a beautiful, you know, single-story estate, a vineyard estate. Yet 12,000 feet is quite large, I think even relative to some of the larger homes on Fulton, and just maybe something to consider in the future of what sort of, what sort of mix of size of homes and estates you want within the city limits. Curious about the move of the barn, so I was glad to see it moved out of the floodplain because it was taking up flood capacity, so glad to see, was that largely why it was moved at request of staff?
That's exactly right.
Okay. Was there any dialogue or involvement with the amended list in terms of the proximity? Oh, am I timed out? I'm sorry, I didn't...
Yes, you can continue a little longer.
Okay, thank you.
You would have to ask the applicant. I don't, I don't know.
Okay, just didn't know if there was any engagement with the amended list. Okay. I know, they're, they're in their 90s, and it's somewhat overgrown now, but that property was initially designed to sort of orient towards roughly where the barn is, so.
She answered the door, and he said, "I'm not getting up. I'm too old."
So I also didn't have a chance to look at the details enough in the plans to see, there's no curb and gutter being put along the Fulton, correct? Okay, good, thank you. I, I noticed in the Fulton commercial property by the tracks, there was a comment about how... how it was mutually agreed not to put curb and gutter in, I was surprised, you know, at this point in time, after a few public debates about some projects on rural streets getting curb and gutter, why we're still taught, having to have agreements not to put curb and gutter in, and why the planning code doesn't designate those rural streets as not requiring curb and gutter. They, they don't need curb and gutter, and putting curb and gutter in in a hodgepodge way on any of them is just a, sort of a monstrosity, so, it'd be nice to revisit that as well. I see in the general plan update, there's still language along those lines, that they're rural streets designated that way, but there's still like curb and gutters, like, can't remember the language, like optional or something like that. Like, it's, imagine curb and gutter at, you know, 601 Fulton Lane for, you know, 50, 100 foot stretch there, so, if you can add that to the list. Lastly, so generally happy comments, my, my sort of skeptical or cynical comment is, you know, it seems like there are a lot of projects get done these days, it's sort of, you feel like a foot in the door, you know, it's a, it's a winery and it gets a certain amount of visitor permits, and then it goes way over and, and the next thing you know, it gets kind of grandfathered in and then permitted, or projects start at this size and they come back and they, they get bigger, it just seems to be generally sort of an MO these days, so. The barn, I remember reading applicant's statement about, and, and hearing tonight your interest in, in gardening, and that's terrific, I'd love to join you and work, you know, work the garden and, and, and work in this, this very large barn. It, it felt like a winery when I, when I looked at the plans, and my skeptical side worries that, that it will become one, and I don't think the neighborhood wants or can support traffic associated with the visitation, you know, the platypus buses turning around in my driveway, and people coming out and trying to make their way to the river, across the river when they can't, and, so my skeptical side wonders if this will be a, a winery in a couple of years, and would love to hear you just say that's not your intention.
For, for the record, we're never making one.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate it.
We will contribute to the making of one myself.
And, and for the record, it helps a great deal if we do not generate conversations with members of the audience because the microphone won't pick them up.
Sorry about that.
So if you have questions, it would be better to direct them to the commission.
Okay, thank you.
And then, then we'll, we'll make sure the record is covered.
Okay, appreciate that. I'm sure it'll be a beautiful project, I don't have any comments in opposition, appreciate, appreciate also the flexibility in moving the driveway back in, in response to concerns from my neighbors. And appreciate Commissioner Anderson pointing out the Hunter project in their backyard, glad that they are aware of that. The general plan's going to get approved in a couple moments, my last comment, very close.
You've had double time.
Okay. Including that general plan's the extension of Adams Street across the river, so, hope that never happens, but that's also in the general plan coming up, want to make sure the applicants are aware of that.
You're, you're welcome to come back on the next item. Is there anyone else that would like to speak to the commission on the public hearing? Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing and turn to my commissioners. Commissioner Pont, you look the most willing to start?
Well, I looked around and nobody else is moving, so I did. I appreciate the amount of time it takes to get here. I'm, I'm probably looking at more than a year's worth of work. And for good or ill, how the process works is the planning commission comes in right at the end, gets to read everything everybody's written, I hope, and try to make it all fit in the nice neat little boxes that we're given to make it fit in. The, the one thing that stands out for me on this project is the one acre. You know, that clearly some things are included in exemptions that shouldn't be, right? I'm not sure that if we have a, a barn that's counted as developed area, that none of the ways to get to the barn are not counted as developed area. That pathways put in for fire protection because the house is, but it is being built shouldn't be included in developed area. So, my whole question about this is, what's developed, what's not? I would say a couple of these locations clearly shouldn't be excluded, I mean, it clearly says the driveway is only 16 feet wide, you've got a couple of locations where it's not. I'd like to hear the other, the commissioner's other opinions on these fire routes that were built because the house is being built, whether or not they're excludable or not. The driveway to the barn, whether that should be excluded or not? It's 1,000 square feet. Actually a tad bit less, but out of 12,000, that's pretty close to the limit, particularly when you see things that obviously should not have been excluded. That's where my concern comes from. And, and that gentleman with the no curb, gutter, and sidewalk, if you walk around town, you'll see places that have no curb, gutter, and sidewalk because there never was a deferred development agreement, they were built in the 1860s, 1870s, 1880s, and to this day, we have no curb, gutter, and sidewalk in locations where you should. So, the only thing about a deferred development agreement, which I assume is going to be part of this project, is that eventually things develop. So, that's my two cents worth.
Thank you, Commissioner Pont. Commissioner Anderson? Can you be tempted to speak?
Nope.
That was direct, I like direct.
I think, I think one of the challenges when you undertake something like this is, you know, working with fire to, to meet, to meet the layers of their, of what, what they require. You know, I think the, you know, the bump out that happens on the drive happens because they likely require a, a passing, you know, over, over a certain length, they, they require that you have a, a means to pass something else, I mean, that's, that's...
It's every 400 feet ordinarily.
Yeah. You know, I don't, I don't think that we, I think when somebody meets, meets the requirement or is, the, the analysis by staff is that they meet the requirement, you know, whether it's 1,000 square feet less, or, or 50 square feet less, or, or five square feet less, I don't think it's really, we, we, we set these limits because that's, that's the limit we set. I don't, I don't think weighing in to what, how shiny something is, if it's, if it's determined to be shiny enough, it's, I, I don't, I don't see the point of that, or I don't, I don't see the productivity of that. You know, I think we can, you know, it's tricky to, to determine square footage of, of agricultural land, I mean, it depends on your vine spacing, it depends on your, you know, what are we, what are we counting plant? You know, because you, in ag space, you have turnaround, you have, you know, so I, I don't, I don't find a, a large problem or, or the need to sort of micromanage that, that aspect of it. You know, I think, I think it's a sensitively thought-out plan, I think they've integrated the landscape into the building, you know, I think it, there's, you know, you could make the argument that veggie beds and, and, you know, sort of ag-inspired planting that, that also functions as landscaping around the house, I think, just kind of fits with the overall theme of this, you know, what, what is an ag-inspired estate? So I, I don't, I don't have, I don't have an issue with the project.
Thank you, Commissioner Hale, Commissioner Minette?
Uh, yeah, well, I'm always really, really interested in what neighbors have to say, it seems to me to be the, in some ways, the main focus of my concern in terms of impacts, and I think that the neighbor who spoke is more, is more in, you know, is, is, supports this project, which I'm glad to hear, however, a couple of things that he said, I think, you know, are worth respecting, and that, and so I would like to know if, what is the use that Ag 20, can you have a winery in Ag 20 without getting a use permit? No.
No.
Okay, so that's, that is, I didn't think so, okay. And so, that might take a little bit of the cynicism out of the concern, and it is quite large, and I think there are some times when there can be discretionary decisions made by us in terms of, even though it meets all the requirements, it's too large for the ambiance of the neighborhood or to, you know, I don't think in this case that's a consideration, so, even though it's large, I don't think it's going to impact neighbors' qual, a sense of quality of life in the ambience, so, that's, I'm okay with that. So, you know, I, I approve of this plan, I think, yeah, it's really amazing, thoughtful, bigger than anything I could ever imagine, but that's my limitation, and so I, I can, I support it. I do have one comment, I thought, on the, under the general plan, when they pulled in the general plan sections that they, that were, I thought 4.3.26 did not fit with this, because I don't think this is similar to things that are found in older neighborhoods. So, I don't think it's extremely important, but I did, I did have some issue with that, so I don't know if the rest of the commission has any, you know, feels one way or the other about that, but if that, maybe that should be taken out, I don't know if that was suggested, I, I don't know, maybe I could ask you about it.
About that general plan policy?
Yeah.
I, I agree with you, I shouldn't have put it in there.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
So, okay, thanks. And so that's, that's, that's it, so, I support this project.
Thank you, Commissioner Minette.
I, I am concerned about our ability to apply our A20 development restrictions coherently and consistently, and I recognize that we may not have a very well-developed set of Those of us who go through the county's winery use permit process now have a, you know, a complete breakdown of all of the parts of the developed area that count for coverage and the parts that count for winery development area, and we know how to break out accessory uses and production uses, and it's been done so many times that the guidance in writing that comes with the application makes it a, not an easy thing to accomplish, but certainly feasible, and, and I think it generally works with a fair degree of consistency. I, I don't think we have that kind of, you know, result from a iterative process here in St. Helena because we don't do it often enough. That said, I do think the policy is very important for reasons that Commissioner Pont articulated. The limitation on development is there to preserve agricultural land. So, my concern here really isn't with the details of the project, the project is gorgeous, frankly, but rather with, you know, how, how we have articulated the standards or, or not, that are reflected in the site development area calculations. And there's a related concern, the fire department requirements are shown, or at least, we have the, you know, certain areas identified for fire department access on the plans, but the only written piece of the whole package that comes directly from the fire department reflects the conclusion, not, it doesn't state the standards, there's nothing in the packet to inform me of what the fire department requirements are unless I assume that they're exactly what I see. And I'm, I am fairly cynical, and, and I, or at least skeptical, maybe that's not the same as cynical. I, I'm always hoping to be able to confirm, and yes, I could go to the code, but Commissioner House, do you have anything to clarify the applicable standards here? Because I see a lot more access than would be required by Cal Fire, and I don't know, I know that the city of St. Helena has often had more stringent requirements than Cal Fire, but I don't know that they go this far.
So, the fire department, I, I think the context of the, of the, the process is important, this project was going through the process essentially during and directly after the firestorm, and so...
Yeah, which sounds like we're looking at a sort of ad hoc extraction.
So, the fire marshal, if you look on sheet C3, this is one of the...
C3.
This is one of the engineering civil sets, you'll identify that there are two fire department turnarounds that are specifically identified, and the applicant's representative is also here to comment, but so, there was significant iterations and revisions that resulted both from planning, public works, and the fire department's review of this project. And so, as you know, there's 150-foot access location, and the fire department needs their vehicles to be able to get to all places that are necessary in order to fight a fire, and so the combination of these requirements, that all access drives be built to be able to withhold the weight of the fire engine, the location and inclusion of two fire department turnarounds, and then also fire department condition of approval number 44, which states that all access roads must be designed and constructed to support the weight of a fire engine. While I understand the chair's concern over maybe the code-specific application...
Well, it, it looks to me like a situation which the fire department saw an opportunity to get more than they're authorized to require, I, I mean, it, it's just that simple.
And I, I wouldn't...
And at the same time, and I, I want to be sure everyone understands, that, that I fully appreciate all of the reasons why the homeowner would want...
And I think the...
A full measure of, of access and protection, it, it goes more to the challenge we have figuring out how to identify areas that are part of development area and that aren't, and, and where the fire department requirements fit into that.
And I think the 150-foot hose-length access requirement was the primary driver for those access roads, but I'd like the applicant's representative to speak further to that, except I would just add, the amount of current active agriculture did go into how we analyze this project for compliance, and there are significant portions of the site that are not currently being actively farmed. So it should be noted as a part... site that are not currently being actively farmed. So that should be noted as a part of the commission's discussion.
Well, I think I brought that up early on. Thank you. Um, Mr. Desmond, please, if you have something to enlighten us.
I'm going to keep it real simple. Basically, the applicant would much rather have vineyard than access drives and turnaround areas to the rear of the proposed residence. Those are simply there as in response to comments we've received from the fire department.
Thank you. And so then, part of my unease with what we have here as a commission is we don't have those comments. It, it doesn't look like the result of a process in which the fire department reviews the application and sends the applicant comments and then that become a part of the record. Maybe they are, but they don't seem to be, uh, in the packet.
So it's not common for the planning department to provide, uh, issues, letters, or, uh, individual comments from other departments as a part of the planning commission's packet. Uh, we see that as part of the administrative process that staff goes through to resolve issues. And we bring projects forward that have either worked with staff to resolve those issues as identified by staff, or projects where the applicant indicates they no longer wish to respond to the staff's concerns. We, we can start to provide all of that additional documentation if that's the interest of the commission?
Well, I, I don't want to dictate, um, sort of unilaterally, but this is a circumstance in which, um, my desire to understand better, uh, the extent to which this is responsive to comments or not, uh, would have been answered if the comments were there. Um, so that, then, you know, we can have a discussion as a commission about whether we want more of that kind of information in packets at another time. Um, and I, I'm just going to beg the applicant's forgiveness here, but, but part of my frustration, I think some of my commissioners share it, with the current state of our zoning ordinance is that it seems repeatedly to compel us to wrestle with problems of interpretation that, uh, may not really have a big impact on our sentiments about the application in front of us, but which are important enough that, uh, it makes sense to take the opportunity to identify the concern, articulate it in a way that, uh, we can take it up again in, in an intelligent manner, uh, down the road, which we're certainly going to need to do with a number of things here. And, and, uh, you know, I, I just find myself struggling with this. Uh, I'm, I'm not sure that if the, um, identification of developed versus agricultural area were as narrowly defined as I think it should be, uh, that, that we would meet the one acre project. And yet I recognize that the language of the ordinance, uh, seems to defeat the purpose of the policy. And, um, I'm, I'm hard-pressed to, uh, uh, find good reason to fault, uh, the project or the applicant or staff for, um, the way in which, uh, the ordinance has been applied. But I'm, I'm really troubled by it, because the implication is, as I say, that if, uh, another applicant on a large A-20 parcel came forward and there were no, um, area on the parcel in active agricultural use, that there'd be no, uh, standard whatsoever. And that, uh, result is so extreme, it would seem, um, untenable, since it's completely inconsistent with the intent. And yet, uh, it's, uh, rather difficult to reconcile the language. I mean, I don't, I don't even want to think, I don't get paid enough to figure out, frankly, uh, how to reconcile it. Uh, we, we get a hundred dollars a month, just so you know.
[laughing]
Uh, it, trying to craft some interpretation that doesn't just ignore the language that's there, uh, in order to reflect what we understand to be the intent, uh, it's, it's more than I'm going to take on. So I think I've said either enough or too much.
If I could, Chair Hardy, I'd like to read the last sentence here. Uh, under, where it says "non-agricultural coverage," everybody's been sticking to the active agricultural use. That's only half of what's in there. If I could, please. Um, "All structures, driveways, except for a 16-foot wide driveway, no greater than two-thirds the length of the parcel. Parking, patios, lawn, or other non-agricultural uses shall be limited to the one acre maximum per parcel." So there, it doesn't talk about active agricultural use. It says "all non-agricultural uses shall be limited to one acre." Period.
Mm-hmm. That's clear. Yeah. I was thinking, I don't know if this is appropriate to say, but, um, you know, in terms of getting that kind of information, I know that Noah has, um, offered, if, for instance, if you sent an email, if you sent an email to him asking for that documentation, they would send it to all of us. And that way, this extra kind of documentation wouldn't be a standard part of the, this, 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 um, you know, the...
It says "non-agricultural uses."
No, 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 no. I'm talking about the, the...
She's referring to Mike.
About the comments, because, I mean, we get enough paper. I mean, you don't want to waste paper. But my sense is if anyone on the commission, because we can't email each other, I, I think you've said in the past, if we were to email you for those documents, you would shoot them to everyone, um, so that we could all hear whoever's question it was, plus get the answer. So, because we get it, we get our packets, you know, ten days in advance now. So I, I don't know if that would solve that issue, because then if you wanted that documentation, if you read it and wanted to see that information, we'd all have a chance to see it, you know?
Thank you, Commissioner Monette. Uh, I'm, I'm more concerned now with, um, that's something I can follow up on with Noah. That, that's easy. Uh, I think, uh, I'd like to bring this discussion towards a close. And to do so, I'd like to, unless there, no, I think I went through all the commissioners. I had one pass, one abstention. Um, so it seems to me the key for moving forward is, uh, an informal poll here as to whether anyone other than, uh, myself and Commissioner Pont are concerned with the, uh, calculation of development area. Commissioner Hale, I, I think you indicated you were not, uh, rather clearly, but I'm going to ask you one more time.
I guess I would, um, I would say I was not. Um, and I can, after the discussion, I can see how, you know, moving forward, I think the importance of, of some of the clarifications of these, you know, each, each time we go through a round of this, uh, you know, we, we get a project where they've, where they've gone back and forth and back and forth and back and forth, and with advice from staff and public works and fire to meet, you know, what we, what we throw at them as the, or what the, you know, city, uh, says the, the requirements they must meet. And they, um, you know, the, the applicant and, uh, their, uh, hired experts, you know, endeavor to, to meet those. Um, and I think it gets a little tricky when we, um, get up here and, and on the fly try to, um, you know, we complain about the things not being clear enough. And aft, after the, after the project's already gone through, you know, these machinations, kind of back and forth, uh, I, I find that kind of problematic from a, uh, I think, I think it's inherently sort of unfair process for, uh, for the applicant. Um, and I think it, it sort of puts, puts staff in a, in an awkward, uh, position where they've, uh, you know, staff, staff meaning, you know, fire, public works, uh, planning, any of these different departments, where they've kind of worked, uh, in good faith with, with the applicant, with, with their experts to sort of meet and hone and, and recalibrate, uh, and, and believe and represent that they've, they've done that. And then it comes to us and we, uh, sort of dicker on the, the meaning of, of, uh, the, the different aspects. I, you know, that, that I find just troubling. I don't, uh, you know, I think it's, that just weighs into the, to the idea that as we, as we move forward and we talk about this, you know, code revision and code, code refinement, that we, um, that we take it seriously. Um, but again, I don't know that we fix it on this project. Um, you know, I, I think at this stage, I'd rather weigh in and, and support staff and support that process that's brought it here. Um, and, and embrace that it, that we have an imperfect system that we're, that we're working, you know, working on and trying to improve, so that, you know, we, as other projects come before us, we have a little, uh, a little clearer leg to stand, you know, a little, little stronger foundation to sort of analyze these things and base yea or nays upon. Um, but I think as, overall as I see it, uh, understanding the process that's brought it here and the, um, I think good faith effort that's, that's gone into that, I, I, uh, I would not be against this project. I couldn't, um...
Well, this is the start of a really interesting, long conversation that I would like to have some time, but not here, you know, about the things you've brought up.
Should I restate my question?
Our function. I have no, uh, concern, no, I am not concerned with the, um, with the, with the one acre issue.
Commissioner Anderson?
I'm not concerned with the one acre issue.
Very good. Thank you. Um, so, um, that's important. That will enable us to move on. Uh, I am concerned. Um, I, I, I don't understand, but given the recent poll, it's not necessary to answer this question. Uh, I, I don't understand why we have a barn development area counting as development area, but the access to the barn counting as agricultural area. Uh, I will say, in my experience, residential projects like this, one would expect the barn to be a multi-use structure. Um, but I'm not sure the ambivalence of the area calculations relates to, uh, to that or to something else. Um, and I do think, you know, the next time, uh, one of these comes forward, uh, we should see a very careful, um, assessment of, you know, what, what's agricultural and why, and, and what's development area and why. Um, because I think the underlying policy that generated the limitation is, was and remains very important. Um, and, and I agree, Commissioner Hale, that, that we should always be mindful of the tremendous time and effort and investment that goes into producing an application like this. Uh, we see it, uh, at the end or near the end of the process, um, and a lot goes into it. Um, a lot goes into it typically long before it gets to staff. Um, and I think we need to take staff's recommendations seriously. Uh, but I don't think that means we should always accept them, uh, without question. Um, I, I think we can and should disagree from time to time. I think if we don't, that's a problem too.
Why are we here?
Um, so with all that said, um, I would entertain a motion.
I would move that we accept staff recommendation to move the, approve the project.
Second? Second.
Ms. Camaro?
Is this motion as amended?
They were intending...
Commissioner Hale?
Yes.
Commissioner Monette?
Yes.
Commissioner Anderson?
Yes.
Vice Chair Pont?
No.
Chair Hardy?
Yes. That brings us to, oh, no, you're not going to leave? I'm so disappointed.
[laughing]
No. That brings us to item 5.2, but, um, I propose that we take a brief break. Let's reconvene in five or so.
You'll never have any parcel unfortunately ever meeting that requirement, because none
They excluded more of that driveway than is allowed under our code. And that's clear. That's clear. So you accepted something, that the calculations were incorrect, knowingly incorrect.
Every vineyard, every vineyard has a, has an access, has an access driveway.
Our code only allows sixteen feet, two-thirds the length of the parcel to be written off.
As a driveway.
As a driveway. They wrote off more than that as a driveway.
But if you also look at it, that actually counts as an access drive per our code definitions also.
But that doesn't count under this piece. You can't say this is a.
Well, no, but it, it meets both definitions. So, because it serves two functions. On an agricultural parcel, my driveway that continues on to my vineyard is both.
I'm not counting that.
But I'm just saying.
I'm, I'm counting that, what they wrote off.
Yeah.
They wrote off more than the sixteen feet.
Because of the bow bout or because of the length?
The bow bout? No, length is fine. At least as far as.
Bow bout, the hammerhead turnaround.
Yeah. Beyond, beyond what code allows.
That's not agricultural. No way.
And beyond what code allows?
Because there's a house on it. But I'm just, but the, so I would just say, they were completely honest in what they showed you. Because we have no, we have no way to force somebody to farm. People can rip out all the vines.
No, I understand. I.
You know what I'm saying? And so.
That's what I'm saying. This definition comes out from both sides.
Yeah.
And you've got to read both sides to come up to the end, not just one side.
Well, and like I said, we've been working with them for a year to get you what you saw and to get the design to where it was. And coming down to, is this a vineyard driveway? Is this a fire department access road? Is this a turnaround for the tractor? Is this a fire department turnaround? Some of those portions are all of those things.
Could be, but you're not going to turn your tractor around on your residential driveway. The surface will be incompatible with anything you're pulling behind the tractor. Ninety-nine times out of a hundred, you're ripping up your driveway.
Totally.
Okay, so, uh, you can call it agricultural access in the sense that the contract farmer might drive his pickup truck in there to get to the vineyard, but it's not, it's not a farm access.
I get what you're saying, but, but you can understand the stuff that we struggle with.
I know. There's not enough worked out and defined and written down to make it.
We hold them to the acre. We say one acre. But then when they want to fight us and they want to parse it and it comes down to a couple of access roads and fire access problem, you know? Because you could split the hair fifty ways?
Well, yeah, but, and, and, and so you get to split it the way you want if you split it the same way every time. That's where I'm at.
Yeah, but.
And I wouldn't split it the way it was split here myself. I don't need to take up more time on that now.
Yeah, right.
But, but I think that one acre limitation is important enough, at least it's important enough to me.
Well, it's important to us.
That, uh, I don't want to see too much accommodation to the project design. Because that, I'm not. I represent applicants for a living. I have a really good feel for where this stuff is coming from.
Yeah.
If, if there aren't going to be big parties in that barn, I will eat my hat.
Of course.
Ten times over.
That's the other thing is.
But then.
A barn is agricultural use, but we don't count that. But it's not going to be in this context, but in certain other contexts it would. You know what I'm saying? So.
Well, yeah, well, barn, see, barn is a name for a structure and what we're care, what we care about is use. It's just a building, really. A building.
Yeah, yeah.
We might go a step further and call it an accessory building if we want, but the real question is how is it going to be used? And in, in this context.
Yeah, we might have hay, that's for sure.
In this context, what happens is the architect will tend to say, well, if it looks like a barn and I call it a barn, then it's agricultural.
But we didn't count it as that.
Yeah, no, I know. I know. But the access counted.
What?
To the barn.
I get it. Which I, I, it wasn't my problem, but I saw that.
Yeah, yeah, so.
That, I agree with you guys. But you guys can talk, cut that out.
This is the first time we've had a discussion like this. I'd rather have the discussion, move on, and everybody knows.
Sure.
You know, what, at least what John and I think about that, and.
Well, but like I said, we generally, we hold people to that.
Good, good.
And when it comes down to this, it's like, well.
I know.
It wasn't a denial. We didn't break it from denial.
No.
Over access drives that were forced by the fire department.
No.
But they called me, it was a fight the whole last year to get it to where it was.
Well, yeah, no, I just got a little earful from Greg about that. Oh, I mean, I called, to me, that, that has fire department extraction written all over it.
Totally, well, yeah. Well, the other interesting thing is, you know what I'm saying? Which is however that feeds into it.
So I'm, I, I'm just inclined to get this stuff out, air it out, try not to overoccupy the discussion of a particular project with a larger concern, but also not to ignore discussion of a larger concern raised by.
Totally. Which I mean, I appreciate.
So I'm just looking for balance.
Well, that, because that informs every discussion I have with folks.
Yeah.
But. But actually, halfway, isn't that exclusion for it? You know what I'm saying?
Oh.
And the fact that they were being honest about it, you know, anyway.
Yeah, no, that, it was a, all the information was there. Right? The calculations were there, the layout was there. I could read and see everything was going on. I didn't have any problems understanding the plan. And that's good, because that's not always true.
No, I know. But it's like, what are you? A formal path, a main path to the end. But they have a formal one. Accessing the barn.
Yeah, to me, that looks successful to the residents.
Absolutely. I agree with that. And actually. Let's put your garden and that way out of there. I have no authority to tell you no. We don't permit flat work. You can paint your own site. There's no permit required, other than two sets of twelfth lines, but there's no building code.
Oh, if you're paving, you can grade, you can, you can.
Grading triggers a permit.
Right. And, uh, right. Once you've done the grading, you don't need a permit for the asphalt. That's true.
So I'm just saying, there's all these.
Yeah, I know. I know.
I mean, you know very well, yeah.
It's.
Oh, I was a teething.
But, but according, but according to that, those, those second, those second, the two, the two days.
I get it. I understand the, the acre thing, but.
It's clear, but the second part that you're talking about.
There isn't really anything we can do about that until we get a scale.
That's clear.
Yeah, no, that's something like that.
Assuming you're, you're saying this was all removed from act.
I drink from the pitcher. Do you know where to find one?
Yeah.
I would be, I would be ever. I need a new one. No, it just got packed when we moved.
Oh. Because you're not living next door.
No, I'm living next door. Oh, man, did it ever. One of our growing number of second homeowners.
So you just have to, it's just your neighbor?
Yeah, yeah. We, we get along really well. They hardly ever use it. They don't rent it out at all. And the only, uh, thank you so much, sort of blackout, they're coming up for Bottle Rock. So Janet and I are gonna, you know, head out of town that weekend or something. Aptos, SoCal, down there? Oh, I'm good. Thank you. I'm getting really excited about my vacation now. That's really close. I'm going to Iceland. I'm going to music festival, Bottle Rock.
In Iceland?
Yeah. No, Bjork has never been to this festival. It's in. Well, there's one. There's one. Oh, yeah. Oh, yeah. You just look at the picture. It's like, oh, I know what they're gonna say. That's so predictable. It's a whole range of current. Yeah, because there's always an Icelandic. They're going to it big time. The Iceland music scene, they're really into electronica. That's almost a kind of Icelandic signature for the Icelandic style. There's some more conventional rock. Usually they have, at this festival, they have a men's chorus from a town on the next fjord over come. So that's very traditional Icelandic, uh, uh, choral music. Um, when we were there in 2008, we heard a folk singer from the Pharos. Pharos. Pharos are out sort of halfway between Norway and Iceland. There's actually a ferry that runs from Norway to the Pharos and then to Iceland. Sounded like a sort of groovy folk singer, really. She had.
It was harmony, I mean, it was regular Western harmony? I mean, was it really?
Oh, yeah, yeah. Pharoahs doesn't sound like anything most of us have heard, but, uh, I guess it's just a small crowd and I should start, huh? Yeah, yeah. Okay. Okay, I'll call the meeting back to order. Yeah, the general plan continues to draw a huge crowd. So, I'm with you there. Item 5.2. See, what's its official title here? It's in here somewhere. Wait a minute. I'm on the wrong part of my packet. There we go. Review and recommendation to the city council of the draft Santa Lina 2040 general plan update and draft final program environmental impact report, including the response to comments mitigation monitoring and reporting program, the MMRP, and proposed statement of overriding considerations, including all properties citywide and in three specific study areas located to the south and east of the current Santa Lina city limits as identified therein. And then we have a three-step recommendation for action, but, um, Director House, speak to us, please.
Thank you, Chair Hardy and members of the commission and public. Stated very well, this is the final review, staff is anticipating this is the final review of the 2040 general plan and associated environmental documents by the planning commission and recommendation to the city council. On both of these documents, there's a significant amount of background identified in the staff report, but as the commission will recall, on March 19th, the planning commission reviewed the final draft 2040 general plan and final EIR, including all of the referenced elements that Chair Hardy brought up in the introduction, identifying their conceptual support for the environmentally superior transportation network enhancement alternative, which proposed improvements to the transportation network to facilitate access through the community for local residents traveling by all modes of transportation. In this review, the planning commission identified five additional recommendations to go on to the city council. It's worth noting, these recommendations have not been incorporated or changed, no changes have been made to the documents, rather staff is going to communicate the recommendation from the planning commission to the council and get final direction from the council on the ultimate draft document. However, to summarize, the commission directed, or is recommending that the council modify the language in policy LU1A to remove the reference to accessory dwelling units, essentially to clarify what the intent is, to maintain and ensure that the significance criteria for noise-related impacts be at the five decibel threshold, reference the county-wide pedestrian plan without providing any specific iteration or date to that, remove the redesignation and parking lot references identified and change area 10 in favor of keeping these parcels as designated medium-density residential. And then specifically, number five here in the staff report summary identifies that the planning commission voted to support the environmentally superior alternative, which maintains the extension of Oak Avenue, which is currently identified in the 1993 general plan, without requiring the special study reference for all other street extensions in the general plan. A resolution formalizing this recommendation and making the findings required to support the statement of overriding considerations has been prepared by staff and is attached to the report. All comments on the general plan and EIR received to date were provided to the commission with the previous documents, including responses, and in some cases were thoroughly discussed in those attached documents. However, one additional comment did come in subsequent to the planning commission's conceptual recommendation, and that voiced some concerns over the proposed enhanced transportation improvement alternative, identifying the likely result of changes in Oak Avenue and how that street currently functions. And there was concern voiced by that in the attached letter. Staff has prepared a significant resolution which identifies all the required findings for statement of overriding considerations to be made, recommending these environmentally superior alternative. Staff did receive a call from Commissioner Pont identifying some concerns over kind of some of the more technical elements of the resolution. Staff has taken a number of notes, and I'll leave it to Commissioner Pont to communicate the specifics on those concerns. However, staff is fully supportive of the slight modifications that Commissioner Pont has identified. With that, that's the, concludes my report. I'm happy to answer any questions or add any other information if the commission would like.
Any questions for Director House?
Yeah, I, I think I'm just gonna ask one. And it, it's based on the unfortunate activity to have three alternatives. One is called the preferred plan. So we have the preferred plan, the no project alternative, and the transportation enhancement alternative. In the, the exhibit A, the overriding, several spots seem to me to confuse the alternative proposed plan with the actual document itself. So that's just an overall correction I'd like to see made so it's not confusing, so people read plan instead of proposed plan, so we don't get confused between the alternative proposed plan and what we're really trying to adopt here. That's all. Everything else, I think, was just a little bit too technical. Change this word, change that word. Spell hover instead of over, instead of hover, that kind of stuff.
Any other questions or comments from the commission for Director House?
This is just sort of anecdotal, but I, I, I called the state on the liquefaction issue, and there are no maps right now. And it's, it's just about, you know, it's. and, um, there are no maps right now, and it's, it's just about, I, you know, it's, it... What I learned, um, totally supports what you told me we're doing, so I wanted to get back to you on that. So I have no more concerns about that at this point.
Thank you for taking the time to do that and for bringing it up.
If there are no other questions or comments for Director House, I will open the public hearing. The public hearing is open.
Hi, everybody.
No time limit.
Yeah, good. This is my first appearance here. My name is Lorraine Ruston. I reside at 2798 Spring Street. And I did not bring the letter, but my property is one of the, uh, recommendations for making a small change. The change is in, uh, years ago, they, I think whoever was in charge of planning just took a ruler and made a line through my property. And I've been after the planning commission for years to change that line so that it goes behind my house instead of in front of it. And if it...
Excuse me, but what does this line signify?
It signifies the difference between, uh, what, woodlands and watershed zoning. And what's the other called? R1A? I, I can't re... I should have brought the papers. I didn't.
This is at the end of Spring Street. I don't remember which change area. I can get the information.
I think it's number nine on your list or something.
Is it on the creek side or upstream?
Upstream. It's on the hillside.
Uphill side.
And, um, are you familiar with, um, oh, what's his name? Tom? Now, I, I'm not very well-prepared, but at any rate, his property is the same elevation of mine. And I just wanted the line behind, in, behind the house instead of in front of it.
It brings it into the LR1A...
Thank you.
Uh, zoning district and modifies the urban limit line slightly.
Very slight modification, but I've been writing, meeting with planning commissioners for the last 20 years, asking them to please change this, and they said, "Wait till the master plan comes up." Here it is.
It's change area nine.
Change area nine, yeah.
Area nine, where...
Which is page 353 in your packet. Uh, will identify... All the change areas, and you can see nine moves the urban limit line slightly and the low-density residential.
Tom Redman, his property is higher than mine, and it's in a different zone. So it, it just wasn't fair, the way the line got drawn many years ago, and I, I wanted to make it fair, so... That's, I'm not, I don't have any plans to do anything. I'm just here to say thank you for recommending this.
And this changes the density? What does it do in practical terms?
It, it will. It will, uh, add a slightly more intense residential density for this portion of her property from the woodlands and watershed to the density allowed in the low-density residential.
And when you say this portion of her property, it was previously split-zoned? Is that what I understood?
That's my understanding from the land use maps I've identified. However, I'm not, I haven't... Wasn't around for the impetus of this change, and so I haven't delved into the specifics significantly. But it does seem to be split-zoned based on the current...
And you're here in support of the change that's recommended in the general plan?
Absolutely. I just wanted to thank you for recommending this, and when it comes before the city, I'll come and say thank you again.
Well, that's, that, that happens so seldom. Delighted, thank you.
I vote well.
Yeah, that, that...
Let me check.
Sylvaner property used to belong to my family. We've owned this land since 1941. My dad sold 15 acres to Sylvaner when it was developed in the seventies. So I've been around a while, and I just wanted the line to be fair, so... Thank you.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you very much.
Wow, perfect timing. Is there anyone else who would like to speak? Seeing none, I will close the public hearing. You have to take them, the gavel away from me for that. Be still my heart. Commissioner Anderson, please.
I wasn't here for the last discussion, but I watched from home. And the, uh, removing the designation or the redesignation for the mixed use on Church Street.
Page 86, is that what you're saying?
Page 86.
That was one of our change items.
It was. Mm-hmm, and I...
Number four?
Uh, yes, number four. I agree with removing the parking lot reference, but I believe that it should stay mixed-use designation. I know that, I believe the sentiment was that it was so small that it, it didn't matter if it was removed, but I think that can go either way.
Do you use your microphone?
It wasn't just because it was so small. It was, the neighbors didn't like it, the residents didn't like it. The other problem was that it's such a small piece, that even if somebody did manage to put them all together, it's not of significant size for a developer to want to do that. It is so small.
But shouldn't we leave that up to a developer to decide?
I mean, it's...
I mean, this is just saying that it could happen, not that it's explicitly going to happen.
Well, besides that access, that, those parcels are terrible.
I'm, I'm a pretty strong proponent of increasing density wherever we can. But after listening to the property owners who came before us, I was persuaded that these particular parcels, um, because of their size and their location, are likely to remain for some time, uh, uh, in our inventory of very moderately priced, single-family residences, unlike almost any other medium-density parcels you can find. The, the narrowness of the lots and the fact that they butt on the wine train, I think, is gonna limit their value. And what's, you know, driving a lot of the trends that, um, concerned me and many members of the community, uh, is really the, uh, uh, consequence of land values. And I... Anyway, that... That's what persuaded me, because in general, I think, you know, any place we can increase density, we should. And mixed use is an interesting way to do that, and, 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 you know, if it works well, um, in terms of the synergy, a great way, but... So you're not gonna talk me out of it?
Yeah, I, I agree with Chair Char... Chair Hardy. For the same reasons, and I think it, yeah, and the neighbors were very persuasive to me too, so...
So I'm, I'm going to speak to a kind of larger process-related concern. You know, I've struggled for a long time now to figure out how to work with, um, a general plan review in which, for a whole variety of reasons, the mission is to, um, move it up to the council as quickly as possible with an absolute minimum of changes. Uh, it, it's a context that, um, I think for appropriate reasons, but I, I do find this problematic, uh, discourages us from undertaking the kind of painstaking and challenging review that, that might otherwise make sense to us. And for a while, I thought that, um, the best thing to do would be to, you know, work through a discussion of, uh, well, back of one more step. The refrain, it's been stated different ways by different people, but, but multiple times at council level has been, uh, "We need to get it done. We know it's not perfect. We can fix it later." Or something to that effect. And, and reluctantly, I'm, I'm on board with that concept. But initially, I thought that meant, you know, really, what we should do was identify the things that we as a commission consider the highest priorities for fixing later and pass that on up to the council with our recommendation. Having given that more thought, um, I'm, my conclusion is that we would actually do better to defer that discussion, not too far off, but, um, to a date after the general plan is adopted. And, and I'm thinking, Director House, that without, um, you know, exceeding our scope of authority, and I'm, try to be mindful of the fact that, uh, we do not, um, have the responsibility or the authority to, um, assign you work. But I think we can, uh, agendize discussions of things that concern us with the implicit understanding that your staff report is gonna be planning commission discussion of whatever it was we told you we wanted to talk about, and maybe not much else. Uh, maybe you'd attach things if we asked you to bring some work that already produced back into a packet for our convenience. And, um, I think we can and should do that with the whole subject of what is it we think should be the highest priority for, um, uh, a revisit in terms of items in this general plan? In other words, my proposal is to, um, think of that as a discussion we would have, I don't know, 60 to 90 days from now. I, I would propose to sit down with Noah and try to look for an appropriate date. I'd, to be honest, I'd wanna be sure that it was sometime, uh, at least a day after the, um, statute of limitations on a challenge to the general plan expires, so that nothing we say can be used against us. But, uh, um, but I wanted to say that because I had been saying, uh, uh, one-on-one with a number of people along the way, that, that I was gonna try to, you know, go through those things at this juncture. And, uh, I don't wanna do that. I don't wanna take the time to do that. I actually think there's a lot of work there if we wanna send a thoughtful, well-explained, uh, set of recommendations up to the council. I think that should be a priority for our time as a commission, and, and I would propose to work with Director House to find, uh, an agenda date when there's enough space on the agenda that we can, uh, spend some quality time, um, doing just that. Uh, and having come up with that conclusion, um, because I've already convinced myself we can have another discussion about the things that I most wanna talk about, about the general plan, and therefore I don't need to talk about them now, I'm, I'm ready to, uh, move on, but happy to, uh, hear from each and every one of my commissioners on where they are with this document, where, whether you're ready to make a recommendation tonight, and all of those good things that are before us. So that's my long intro to the agenda item. Any volunteers? Commissioner Minette?
What you said. No, no, I think that is a great idea. I think we need to get this on to the city council, and we can parse it and, um, you know, later with the same, if, if not more, better, more effectiveness. And I think that, uh, we should do that, and we should celebrate. I think we should do that. I think it's a good idea.
Commissioner Hale?
I agree with, um, your analysis and, and kind of sentiments going forward. I think it would be a good idea for us all to sort of ruminate on what, you know, as, as we've gone through this document, or as I have. You know, there's a lot of issues that, that, uh, I think are problematic or, or introduce other questions. But I, um, and even, you know, to the, uh... I think part of what we're dealing with is, is the nature that it has been pushed, pushed down the road so many times that you have, uh, you know, pieces like Church Street that, that started, uh, maybe under Carol Poole when that was put in, and then it's been folded in and carried on and carried on. But we're, you know, sort of dealing with and reacting to, to the current Church Street, where likely when that, um, volley was made, I mean, the character of Church Street has changed a lot since, in 15 years. And, um, so I, you know, I, I think I'm, I'm on board to sort of move this on. And I appreciate the idea that we should sort of proactively tack or, you know, prioritize the, the, the areas of problem that, uh, you know, and do that, do that soon. I think that's a terrific idea.
Commissioner Pont?
I, uh, I too like the idea of looking at what needs further work in the general plan. This thing has bounced around so much that it's definitely developed some rough edges. And some of it is so old, frankly, um, that, yes, we meet code, but, um, it may not be relevant to what's going on now, like your example of Church Street. I think that the commission as a whole, uh, needs to remind itself, however, that we're also limited on how much we can do. We have a new zoning code. There's probably a dozen other studies in this thing that need to be done, several of which we'll have to pass through here, um, several of which have short fuses. There's a couple in there, I think, that are a year or less. So, um, we've got a lot of work coming from us. I'd, I'd love to do this. I think it's necessary to do this. But I also think we're going to need to be cognizant of our $100 a month and how much extra time we wanna spend on it.
Agreed. I, I think we all, to, to make that kind of, um, enterprise work, I think we all have to be committed to a short list of the highest priorities. It won't work for us to come back and do a comprehensive review in which we try to identify, uh, every flaw or concern that, well, well, we won't have the time, and it, it won't be effective. On the other hand, if we're committed to a short list, uh, we can get it done, and we can, we stand a much better chance of, of seeing something actually come of it. Commissioner Anderson?
Do I get to make the list?
You can make your list.
I do think it's a good idea to have... I do think it's a good idea to have a more concise list of what we're focusing on, especially because we are so limited on time and resources. I'm less concerned about the $100 a month because I expect a larger ROI in quality of life after this is done, but, but we are limited, and I think that your suggestion kind of maximizes our ability to get things done efficiently.
Well, thank you all for supporting my concept, but not having heard anything that would suggest otherwise, I'm thinking we're ready to move on to staff's recommendations, and if I'm wrong, just shout out.
I'd like to move that we certify the final EIR and adopt the sequo findings of fact and statement of overriding considerations for the General Plan, including Exhibits A and B of that resolution, adopt the mitigating, monitoring, reporting program for the Sanlana General Plan update, and approve and adopt the Sanlana 2040 General Plan update as modified and the, and the transportation enhancement alternative as the preferred alternative, hate to use that, in the final EIR.
When you're ready.
Do we have a drum roll, too? Vice Chair Pont?
Yes.
Commissioner Monette?
Yes.
Commissioner Anderson?
Yes.
Commissioner Hale?
Yes.
And Chair Hardy?
Yes.
We have done what no one has done before us.
Not since 1993.
Oh, so, oh, okay. Okay. Nine years, that's... So that brings us to scheduled matters and there are none, department reports.
Just briefly, I'd like to identify that staff intends to bring this document forward to the City Council on May 14th, 2019, for the public, and if Chair Hardy would like to come and represent the Commission at that meeting, you're welcome. I have no problem doing it. It is, it is a common thing, but not a required thing.
Well, perhaps we should do that together, then. Yeah, I would like to do that. Our other department head left us before she could make any reports, so I think that's the end of the reports. And agenda forecast, we have the link, as always. That brings us to adjournment. I've made a promise to myself not to bang the gavel so hard. This meeting is adjourned.